Thank you, Eli Yater Benin, Vice President Lyzer here with the March 2nd, new month, March 2nd COVID-19 Town Hall update. Welcome. Thank you for joining us this morning. As we always do, we have updates, we have new information and just a lot of encouraging words as well. As we hear from our leadership, President Jonathan Nez, whom today is out in the field and he'll be joining us shortly if he can find a high mountain in which to perch on. Coverage out where he's at in Cross Canyon. Twelve homes, I hear, are being lit up. Mr. President is lit today. So can you imagine? People who haven't had energy, haven't had electrical supply for years or if ever are being turned on today by the help and the very important work of our own Navajo Tribal Utility Authority, the Light Up America Initiative in which they're working. So twelve homes being electrified today. So President Jonathan Nez is out in the field and hopefully he'll be able to chime in here. If not, if anything, maybe just the audio. We're having a little difficulty. If we can light up something, let it be broadband, right? We need all the broadband we can get. This pandemic has certainly magnified our issues and the problems, the plight of our nation here, especially with regard to broadband and internet capability. So but being that as it may until we bring great change to the Navajo Nation, which the Nez-Lyzer administration is working feverishly, working very hard to bring change to the Navajo Nation. Just a real thought here, as I said that, I'm thinking, you know, so many years, decades, that not much has changed here on Navajo, but it took a pandemic to bring $714 million to the nation and on top of that, more. Second dispersal of Federal Cares Act funds are coming. And so it's like, wow, you know, how do you make change and bring change? Well, sometimes God provides. Amen. God provides. And so even through a pandemic, He'll use the things that the enemy meant for bad and He'll turn them around and use them for good. What a great and powerful message that is. And all we're having to do here is take it, receive it, be thankful and grateful and then go and help and be a part of the leadership and the decision-making that brings change to our nation. Even though there's a pandemic all around us, I've always mentioned to you that even in a health crisis, which this is, there's always opportunity. Another definition of crisis is opportunity. And so this Nez-Lyzer administration, along with our Health Command Operations Center and our United Command Group and Dr. Jill Jim and all of our health professionals, whom today we'll be hearing a little bit from, Captain Brian Johnson, IHS. Also Marquis Yasi, Navajo Area IHS as well, Dr. Vaughn. We appreciate all of her great expertise and knowledge in leading the charge in this fight against COVID-19. And again, President is out in the field and, you know, the man behind the scenes that makes it all happen, Eli, everybody's favorite person, Eli, we appreciate his ability to get us on the airwaves. And so let us start here. As you can see, I'm buying a little time checking to see if there's a video signal from President out in the field. But let's open up in prayer and I'll get started with my updates. And then I'll introduce Captain Brian Johnson of Indian Health Service here in St. Michael's. So, "Ahiat dien, God. We thank you, Lord Father, our Creator, the Lord of heaven and earth, the God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. Father, you are known by many names and Father, as we call out to you, Father, we invoke the power that you are, that everything that you do and have created would fully awaken, arise, shine and recognize your goodness, your love, your mercy and the grace that's all around us, Father, the preeminence that you are and all-knowing Creator that you are, Father. You knew this pandemic would come and be here and you have sought fit to raise up those, Lord Father, that you've blessed with gifts and talents, Lord, and they use that in their careers, Lord, to help the nation in its most struggling time, in a very hard, difficult time. But there you are, Lord, in this hardship. Everything you've given us is to be successful and to be victorious is all around us, merely awaiting our recognition of it. And so, Lord, we thank you for that provision. Thank you for your hand and, Father God, as we seek your face and wise counsel in prayer for protection, for healing, for the land and for the people, Father, bring to mind those things that we can do, Lord, as your servants, Father. Lord, as we take part in this Town Hall update meeting, Lord, to benefit the people, may we be given wisdom for it and knowledge and given the data that we've been given, the information, Lord, may we use it and in turn send it out, Lord, and bless the people in the land with the knowledge, Lord, that they may run with it and be safe and be the good people that we are, Father. Lord, may we aspire to serve those, Lord, for we're reminded by your word that the greatest commandment is to love our God, our Father, with all our mind, with all our heart and with all our soul. The second greatest commandment is in this new grace dispensation, which you, God, have healed the land. You've made a way to come into your presence, Lord, and be forgiven of all our sins and iniquities. So the second greatest is to love our neighbor as ourself. So we give it his time, Lord Father. Be with us and protect all those that are out, Lord, even our President Jonathan Nez out in the field, Lord, giving light and power with the help of the money that we just talked about, for which we are grateful and thankful, Lord Father. Money is the medium in which we conduct trade and transactions, Lord Father. It's merely a tool, Father. We are not to worship it. We are not to covet it. But, Lord, it is a tool and you've blessed us, Lord. Every good thing comes from the Father of lights, comes from above. And we thank you again, grateful hearts that we have, Father, as leaders of this land. Father, may we use that and more, Lord Father, as you see fit, Lord, to bless again the people that catch us up for decades long of just misappropriation, misguidance, Lord, maybe even mismanagement, Lord Father, with the money that you've made, this leadership, stewards of, Lord Father, may we consider that and everything that you've given us, Lord Father, very high and may we, Father, continue to have the thoughts and minds of the people on our minds and our hearts, Lord Father, and we can continue to seek your wise counsel, which is the principal thing. Grant your people wisdom, Lord, all across the land. We thank you and we give you thanks for this. In Jesus' name, ahiat dien, God. Amen. Thanks again for joining us. This March 2nd, it is a new month and so please be safe, all you out there in Facebook Live land. Again, President Jonathan Nez out in the field. I'm going to give my updates here and he'll let us know when he can be seen. We hear the audio, but they're out in the Cross Canyon area, lighting up twelve residents with power with the help and fine and dandy work of our Navajo Tribal Utility Authority. So peace be with them. So our Vice President's updates here. We're continuing to work and monitor this COVID-19 pandemic in Arizona, news from Arizona. As I, you know, again, we'll be hearing from our health professionals here who will give us updates and not wanting to be redundant, I normally follow our President and he gives his updates and then I give a little bit, I guess, additional updates. And I do touch about the states that are around us, of course, Arizona, New Mexico, Utah. In Arizona, Department of Health announced that residents 55 and older are eligible to make an appointment at the State Farm Stadium and Municipal Phoenix Stadium for COVID-19 vaccine in Arizona. So go to the website there or just show up at the State Farm Stadium, where the Cardinals play, who received some great news. They received a proverbial shot in the arm yesterday. J.J. Watt announced he'll be playing for the Cardinals. So he's going to be making people fill the stands, maybe, right, prayerfully. While your Cardinal fans out there are stoked, you are retweeting and reposting all of the posts out there. So congratulations. But for those 55 residents in Arizona and Phoenix, all of surrounding areas, 55 and older are now eligible to make an appointment at State Farm Stadium there in Glendale and also Phoenix Municipal. Phoenix Muni, I haven't heard that in such a long time. I used to live in Phoenix. So give a shout out to Carrie Lake, who is retiring from Fox News Channel 10. Hopefully be able to chime in with you here real soon. Approximately 50,000 COVID-19 vaccination appointments will be given for registration at 12 noon today. So here's a website. Visit podvaccine.adhs.gov. That's P-O-D-Vaccine, V-A-C-C-I-N-E dot A-D-H-S dot G-O-V. So that's great news for Arizona, you know, because data provides insight that 90% of COVID-19 deaths and 65% of the COVID-19 hospitalizations in Arizona are those aged 55 and older. So great news for that. Real quick recap of the numbers here as of yesterday or this morning. Arizona statewide and we are almost, well, we'll just call it what it is. We are a year into this. We went from March 20 to March 21 now. And 18, I'm sorry, 818,670 total positive cases of COVID positives in Arizona. New cases, 849. So the numbers still hovering a little high-ish, highest, you know. Again, all the residents of Arizona are still configured in these numbers and just wanting to remain positive. I won't give the number of deaths here. You know, we do know how hard it's been, it's been hitting those with predisposed health conditions. So continue to be safe out there. Deeper drill down on those numbers. Apache County, 10,469 with five new cases, five. So continue to be safe, Apache County. Navajo County, 15,657 with 10 new cases. Ten, hey, that's pretty good. Coconino County rounding out the tri-county area in northeastern Arizona. 16,599 with 20 new cases. So continue to be safe out there. You see these numbers and the positives, they don't really just stay in one area. They kind of migrate. You just see the ebb and flow of positive cases throughout, not only the counties, but even in our agencies here on the Navajo Nation. So continue to wear masks, double mask. They're talking of the new variants that are out there and, you know, I will hush on that one. New Mexico, 185,297 positive cases with 166 new cases. Those of you may want to go look at Governor Michelle Lujan Grisham's new phases and new, I guess, openings throughout the economy there in Mexico. So just make yourself fully aware of how the state of New Mexico is flowing now, openings and whatnot. So go to their website to look at their latest numbers and how their gating criteria is being played out in the openings there. So San Juan County, 13,529 with eight new cases there to report. Gallup McKinley County, 12,036 with two new cases. So wow, the numbers definitely coming down. We appreciate all of you who are continuing to be safe and be vigilant out there. The numbers are reflective and indicative of a putting COVID-19 behind us, but we're not out of the woods yet. Utah, 371,492 total positive cases last year with five, I'm sorry, 257 new cases. San Juan County of Southeastern Utah, 1,811 total positive cases. And looks like I don't have an update on new cases. Rounding out those entities out there, regions, Navajo Nation Utah, the numbers reported by our Utah Navajo Health System, total positive cases that stands at 1,063. So other news that you'll be hearing, and again, not wanting to steal anybody's thunder, but this is all pertinent data, new information that's updated every day, every hour if not. So our neighbors, our brothers and sisters right across the border there, used to live nine miles over there north of Ignacio. I lived in a small, beautiful town called Bayfield, where my heart is. I believe that is some beautiful country, right up there against the forest lands, the BLM lands. Beautiful area. Our neighbor, Southern New Indian Tribe, reported its first case of the variant detected in California. And so we put this news and information out there so that you can be aware. Some of us and some of you travel or have work or, you know, no family, even our students there. About Fort Lewis College, my alma mater, we give you this information so that you can be safe and to be cognizant of what is happening all around us. So a new variant been detected there, the Southern Indian Tribe, on February 27th. So a press release has been issued by the tribe and also the state public health laboratory identified that variant in this press release. So again, you know, we need to be safe and vigilant. But we're sharing this information because it's needed. We're not promoting. You know, in another time and situation, we might promote new openings, but be mindful to steer clear presently, as even our own casinos are not open or allowed to, again, based on our gating material, information and the decisions behind Health Command Operations Center, being guided by our health professionals. And again, the numbers, the science of it all, right? I mean, we hear that and we're guided by those numbers. But please be aware, again, I'm not promoting this right now, but Mountain Casino Hotel is opening tomorrow. Please don't go. Stay home, stay safe, save lives. And again, we're just putting the information out. We're transparent Nez-Lyzer administration. Everything is put out for you all and hold you accountable as well. We're advising and encouraging our citizens to remain vigilant and continue to be safe. But your safety and you and your family is highly important to us. That is our most immediate concern. So don't rush to other communities. Continue to stay home, be safe. Just a little bit of, I guess, encouragement, inspiration, and I will be finishing up here shortly. So letting Captain Brian Johnson of our Navajo Area IHS here to be, I guess, standing by here as I'll bring him on here just in a few minutes. But just wanted you to remember to continue to seek your prayers, right? Our faith here is a time where we can draw on some unfound strength. Some of us are at our wits' end. And if I could tweak that message, sometimes, well, most times, okay, all the time when you're at your end, you can invoke the power of our Creator. It's when we are weak that He is strong and that He can fill the void. He can fill the question, the doubt and the fear. Where His Word says that, "I have not given a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind." And so when fear comes, we know that's not anything that we should be feeling. We should let our faith extend out and pray to our Creator God, Boho Nihi God, that He would show up and show out amazingly and mightily in our lives. And again, fear is not, it's not a good thing. It's not His thing. And we don't need fear, but love. So that's how you defeat fear is just to love and know that God doesn't give us a spirit of fear. And then when we have that fear, it's not of Him that we need to just run away, let's sing praises, amen? Let's read Scripture. Let's pray. Let's be in service. I just told you. You know, the second greatest commandment is to love our neighbor as ourself. When we take our cares off of us and put it on somebody else, explosion, power, mighty, mighty work and power. I've been there, done that and I can speak in experience. You'll bring the kingdom of heaven into your midst. Serve your fellow neighbor. And so President Jonathan Nez, we do see some video here. So I haven't got the go-ahead that he's going to come on board, but again, videos, the videos kind of splotchy here. Let me give him a real quick and see if he's ready to go. Mr. President, are you ready to go?
Can you see me?
I can hear you. I can hear you, sir.
Can you see?
The video's hanging, buffering. Can't hear anything right now. Just the video's kind of, yeah, it's, I don't know if we're going to make a go of this here. I see a thumbs up, but I don't hear any audio right now.
You see that, the transmission, the transformer just got electrified and now it's going to the home there? Electricity. And we are Boss Canyon area, uh, you know, twelve families will get electricity here. We're, uh, getting eight of them ready today. Uh, we witnessed three of them so far and it's all from the CARES Act funds that came to the Navajo Nation. Twelve families getting electricity in this region. And we want to say congratulations to everybody. Intuway, what an awesome crew, awesome team, they have been. I saw Larry here earlier, Larry, uh, i- is here with us. We're, we're doing this big massive project for, uh, this region and a lot of people are gonna be very happy with electricity. I got Larry here who's gonna talk to a little bit about what's happening with the CARES Act Fund and he's representing, uh, Walter and Rex here too as well. So, come on over Larry and we appreciate Intuway, what a great job they've been doing.
Yes, sir. Uh, Honorable Jonathan Nez, Mr. Nez. I don't couldn't make it, like, to Arizona. I don't, the next issue, I don't understand. Um, but this project is a CARES Act project. It's, uh, added into the CARES Act legislation, uh, by the Navajo Nation Council. A cohort, twelve homes, uh, eh, she, we extended, uh, the power to. So, um, this is one of them. We powered up, this is the third one, we powered up, uh, installing the meter this morning. So, we have, um, some, some more, a few homes that we need to, uh, power up here this morning. Um, uh, power line extension, uh, total right now is seven hundred and thirty-seven of the CARES Act from, uh, last year and then the extension of the new year, twenty-twenty-one. Seven hundred and thirty-one, seven hundred and thirty-seven, I'm sorry, seven hundred and thirty-seven, uh, homes that were, um, powered up. There's a lot of things that are going to this project right away.
All right, thank you Larry, good job Intuway. We got the homeowner here as well, uh, uh, Charlene. Uh, come on over Charlene White and she is, uh, happy today, I do feel happy for you. I, I remember when I first, when our family got first electricity up in Shanto and it was very exciting. So, I'm living that moment with you sister. Uh, she's a shein, so we already connected, she's my, uh, sister. And, uh, electricity, they're putting the meter loop in, then they're gonna probably tell you to come over and switch the, switch the light in a bit. So, uh, introduce yourself, you can talk in Navajo. Big screen TV. Uh, introduce, uh, let over.
Uh, five years I thought, yeah, so we were without electric for that long. Generated, I use it in, in there and I got needed electric. I'm proud of it, you know? Although she said Michael's there, you say, so hard as though trailer, she's honest, through the care, so I'm getting the light too. So, I'm proud.
All right.
Also, he had that donation too, it was Tracy. Yesterday morning, we went back to Louisiana for my railroad.
All right. Well, Mr. Tracy, if you're watching this right now, congratulations. The high-speed internet, she hello Louisiana. We just wanna, just let everybody know in this region, CARES Act funds to electrify, uh, the community. They put the meter loop in, you guys, all good, right, ready to go?
All right. And he said to thank Mr. Trump too, he's a Trump supporter.
Okay, well, there it goes, Mr. Trump. So, we're gonna go over here.
Who's that, who's that?
And, and so, we're gonna go over there and we're gonna see the lights get turned on. So, hopefully, it doesn't cut out, let's go ahead and go transition our way over there. All right. Horse light. All right, here we go, ladies and gentlemen. Is it still on? Not yet. All right. Gentlemen, thank you for the hard work of the Navajo Tribal Utility Authority. Give them a round of applause, everybody, give each other a, good job.
So, the, uh, the, the big, the big news, uh, congratulations to the family out there. And, um, yeah, we're, we're excited with them, I mean, you imagine. And some of you can imagine because you've had that happen, just like our president. So, uh, so we appreciate again, Intuway, uh, rolling out the CARES Act money and that's, you know, spending it great and turning on twelve families. So, what a monumentous day and historic day for the family. So, uh, we appreciate, uh, President being out there with them and, uh, Ms. Navajo. We weren't able to hear from Ms. Navajo, but, uh, appreciative again, Intuway's all their hard work. So, uh, just as we shared earlier, um, I will, uh, prepare Captain Brian Johnson to, uh, get on board with us here in about one minute. Uh, just wanna close up here. Uh, just wanna thank you all, all of our, uh, viewers out there. Uh, again, you know, a lot of things happening, uh. We wanna say that, uh, you know, this pandemic is, uh, is, is, is everything that, that, that we're working on, it is and more. Maybe three or four times more, right? I mean, this pandemic is so huge and so vital and so important right now. But, uh, uh, to run a nation certainly requires a lot. And so, President out there doing, uh, the PR stuff and, um, you know, uh, that, you know, working with the Intuway, that's a great thing. And then, uh, the myriad of, uh, cabinet level people and staff, OPVP staff out there abroad in meetings right now as we speak. Um, there's probably two or three or four meetings going on and we have all our people on it. Our Washington office out in DC, uh, led by Sant T Louis, our executive director, working on legislation, working on policy, working on everything that they can. Our ears to the rail there in, uh, DC. And, uh, we appreciate all their work and leadership. So, uh, thank you for, for, for that work there, our Navajo Nation Washington office. Uh, and so, as I close, uh, I just wanna let you all know something happy, something happy. Uh, happy birthday, Dr. Seuss out there. And those of you who, uh, know Dr. Seuss, uh, we all grew up on Dr. Seuss. Who wants green eggs and ham, right? Or is it green ham and eggs? Anyway, um, just, uh, he planted the wisdom that all of us, uh, first started our, our young lives, our academic lives, right? And, uh, he said, "A person's a person, no matter how small." Uh, so parents, if they're home today with your children, uh, read to them, read them a book. And just, uh, invest in, in the lives of your, your little ones. And so, uh, we appreciate, uh, um, everything that Dr. Seuss stood for. So, happy birthday, Dr. Seuss. And, um, continue to pray for all those who have lost their loved ones. And, um, our prayers go out to, and our love and our thoughts again, uh, be with you and, uh, continue to stay strong, be safe. And, uh, again, you know, earlier I delivered a message just to, uh, you know, uh, press in and pray and, uh, increase your faith and, uh, this hardship is, use it. Use a hardship, you can use a hardship. When hardship comes upon you, you, um, bear down and you, uh, press in, you pray and you, uh, uh, send your faith out there and you change your narrative from negative to being positive and you create a hope and an expectancy. And this hope and expectancy, uh, and faith increase, miracles happen. And so, thank you again for chiming in on this March se- second, uh, COVID-19 Town Hall Update. And, uh, happy birthday, Dr. Seuss. Uh, congratulations to those twelve families who have received power for the, for the first time. And, uh, thank you, President Nez out in the field, Ms. Navajo and Intuway. Thank you for your hard work and diligence. And, uh, we got one shout-out for, uh, the previous administration for the first dispersal of the CARES funds. And so, that's real and that's genuine. And so, we appreciate it, we're grateful and thankful, uh, the Navajo Nation is, so we appreciate that. So, continue to be healthy, stay prayerful and we'll return stronger. I believe we can open up and recover safely from this, uh, COVID-19 pandemic and all of the closures and whatnot. So, continue to love your babies, read a book, Dr. Seuss. And, uh, um, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna bring up, uh, Captain Brian Johnson who's waiting in the wings here to give us, uh, the new updating information on this vaccine rollout and on the numbers, perhaps, that, uh, variants and whatnot, just more timely information from our health professionals. So, uh, Captain Johnson, are you ready?
So, thank you, uh, Vice President, like, appreciate the, the introduction. And, uh, yes, it's, uh, on the second day of March two thousand and twenty-one. Certainly exciting to see families, uh, get, uh, electrical power for the first time. Um, something that is truly meaningful, uh, I'm sure for the families and, and, and having that convenience. Um, so congratulations, uh, across the board, uh, not only to the, the families, but to the Navajo Nation, uh, making progress towards that end. Um, I'm, I'm Captain Brian Johnson, serve as the Acting Deputy, uh, Area Director for the Navajo Area Indian Health Service. And, um, uh, glad to be here today again and just for, with a few comments. Um, and then I'll be handing off the baton to, uh, Dr. Vaughn, uh, who will be sharing additional information with us. But, um, just wanted to, uh, take a moment and remind folks that, um, that the healthcare system that supports the Navajo Nation, uh, Navajo Nation people, uh, continues to be, uh, uh, fully functional and we continue to coordinate, communicate and, uh, just share information as we continue to work our way through this pandemic. Um, uh, we, we all know that it's been a, a long pandemic and we can continue to, uh, fight, the good fight. And, um, and so, we'll, we'll continue onward. Um, we do hope and we do ask for the, uh, public's continued assistance in really following, um, the, the leadership, uh, uh, put forth by the, the Navajo Nation, by the healthcare leadership, uh, so that we can all protect and, and as, as to the extent possible ourselves, uh, each other. Uh, we, we want to keep this virus suppressed to the extent possible. And, um, I, I know we've out, we've just seen such a great effort across the board and continue to thank folks for that. Um, we, uh, the Indian Health Service, uh, continues, uh, to be committed to, um, making sure the COVID-19 vaccine is available for, um, individuals, of course, in our, in our, uh, healthcare system, our patients. And, um, we continue to follow the, the direction that the, the Navajo Nation has set, um, in following the guidance also for the Centers for Disease Control in terms of priorities and with the vax- vaccine. And, and again, um, I always like to touch on the fact that the vaccine is the safest and, and, and the, the best way, the most efficient way to protect our families, to protect each other. Um, as it rolls out and continues to roll out, uh, there are a number of people in the background who are working diligently every day to make sure that when we receive the vaccine, um, when our health facilities receive the vaccine, that it is distributed, uh, across the board in the, in the fairest way possible, in the most equitable way and that, um, that, that vaccine is protected and that it is, uh, given to the public. And, and, and that's, and that's what we're here for, is to make sure we're rolling it out on, in an efficient way and, uh, that we're following the, the guidance that has been, uh, uh, set. And I just wanna take a moment and thank, uh, the vaccine team. Uh, whether you're, uh, working in Winslow, uh, Arizona or Tuba City or, uh, Northern Navajo or Gallup or Chinlea. Um, there, of course, there's a number of other sites I could mention. Um, there's individuals who are working as a team, uh, working with Dr. Jill Jim, um, and, and monitoring the vax- the vaccines and how those are getting out. And again, making sure it's done so in a safe manner. And there's just a number of pharmacists, give a shout-out to the pharmacist today, uh, for all the work that they're doing across the board. Uh, right now is such a critical time for the work that they do in making sure that, uh, we get the vaccine out there. Again, I always like to just take a moment, I, I know that the vaccine continues to be of interest and it will continue to be, uh, into the future as well. And, um, I know in some cases, individuals may be wondering why I haven't been able to, to get my vaccine yet or how come, uh, the schedule hasn't identified me in, in a group that I can get my vaccine. And I just wanna remind folks that, um, you know, patience, patience, patience in terms of, it, it's a wait and we know that, um, the vaccine things, um, have been, you know, limited initially. And now is the, the number of vaccines that are available, uh, is, is picking up steam in terms of, uh, the numbers. And we continue to work our way in orderly fashion through the prioritization schedule. And I'm sure, uh, today that, um, Dr. Jim and possibly Dr. Vaughn may touch upon where we're at in that prioritization, uh, for the, uh, public and for our patients. But, um, it's just important to know that, um, you know, these, these, uh, vaccines are, can, continue to be produced, manufactured and as they are manufactured, uh, we receive weekly shipments. And I also wanna point out that, you know, over the last few weeks, of course, we had some bad weather and, and things, or just weather, I don't know that it's bad, but we had weather, snow and a little bit of ice here and there and other situations. And, uh, sometimes that impacts the timing of when we receive our vaccine shipments. And so, whereas we plan on receiving those shipments on Mondays of each week, uh, sometimes that can be pushed out just a little bit in terms of, uh, going, uh, going into Tuesday. And that can impact our schedule that we have set. So, I just ask again that, um, folks be as patient as possible. I know it can be frustrating at times, um, but, uh, please, uh, help us in understanding that, uh, some of the situations are a little bit out of our hands, but we try to work with what we have and we try to make things right in terms of, uh, taking care of our patients. So, I continue to, to call and check in with our, um, with our facilities, the facility that, that you normally go to. We are recommending that, uh, patients, if, if you are typically seen at a certain facility within the Navajo area. We are recommending that patients, if you are typically seen at a certain facility within the Navajo area, IHS, be it a federal or a tribally managed facility. And we ask that that's where you would receive your vaccine from. It helps with keeping things, as we allocate or distribute the vaccine. It helps us have a better understanding of where we stand on reaching all of our population. So very, very important. Again, I've already touched upon the fact that, you know, the vaccines are the most effective, reliable way to protect you and your family and those around you. And at this juncture, these vaccines, particularly in terms of the COVID or the Moderna and the Pfizer, have been upwards of 94% to 95% effective. And then I'll just also mention that in an exciting way, over the last week or so, actually on February 27, a third vaccine did receive emergency use authorization through the FDA. And that's referred to as the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. And we're looking to receive some of that, which again will yet again help us with our vaccine distribution and what we're sending out to our various facilities. And so again, we're excited about that. The more manufacturers and the more types of vaccine that we have, the more that we can certainly get out there. In terms of vaccinations at present, just as of yesterday, we, up to date, we've received 146,980. So that's the number of vaccines, including both Moderna and Pfizer, that we've received, 146,980. Again, coming up soon, we'll be able to say that we received Johnson and Johnson vaccine as well, which will be helpful. And I'm happy to say of that 146,980, we have actually used or actually vaccinated 135,161. So what that comes out to is 92% of the vaccines have been provided to the public. And we're certainly, we're certainly excited about that. And that is the initial doses of the vaccines. Again, we know with Moderna and with Pfizer that these are two-dose vaccines. And so the 92% does actually factors in both of those. So in terms of the number of second doses that we've provided to date, it's 48,800. So I just want to, I just want to thank the healthcare workers who were involved in the vaccination process because it's a monumental task across the board to be able to track and to make sure that, you know, it's one thing to get an initial dose, what we refer to as the primer dose of vaccine. But to get the booster dose or the second dose and to make sure we're tracking that in a timely manner as required is just, it's a monumental task for the healthcare system. And I just want to thank those out there who are doing that, who are working with the patients to make sure that we all understand that for Moderna and Pfizer, there is a requirement for the initial dose and the second dose. And again, 135,161 have now received the vaccine. It's great to say that 48,800 second doses have been provided as of this date. So quite amazing. One thing that we'll be hearing more about and we'll share more information as it becomes available. The Johnson and Johnson is the first vaccine that is a single-dose vaccine. And so that's exciting news, but we will continue to utilize, of course, Moderna, Pfizer, and Johnson and Johnson as it becomes available. And we'll share more information with you on that. So great job getting the vaccine out there. We continue to demonstrate nationally what that local healthcare system can do. We continue to get positive comments. We continue to get individuals, sources of media contacting the local area wanting to have more information on just how the Navajo area and the healthcare system here locally have been able to get the vaccine out in an efficient way. And that's really great to hear because we know that we have challenges here with our remoteness, just how rural we are in many areas. Yet, we've all been able to work together as the public and the healthcare team has come together and getting the vaccine out there. And folks at higher levels do understand that if they provide the vaccine, it is going to be, it's going to get to the public. And so that's great, great to know that. I'll move on just a moment. Again, I always like to just touch real briefly on variants. And just, you know, it's a, it's a very, that can be a very detailed topic, of course, and one that's very heavily science-based. But for the general public to understand that, that yes, certainly the healthcare system here and the healthcare team and the public health officials are aware that variants of the COVID-19 virus are out there. We've heard about that internationally. We've heard about that nationally within the United States. And basically, as we've mentioned before, there's a number of different, I guess, phrases that one could use. You might hear something referred to as mutations. You might hear it referred to as a variant. Basically, what folks are referring to is a virus that changes. It changes its shape, its structure. And it's just a way for it, it tries its best to live efficiently. It tries its best to survive in the environment and to find ways to change so it survives. That's what a virus does. And at a very basic level. And we're certainly aware that this is happening with the COVID-19 virus. And there are individuals, scientists and others, who are monitoring these variants. And basically, understanding through various types of testing, just in monitoring, just how effective the vaccines that we currently have are in fighting the changes in this virus. And is it still, are the vaccines still effective and those kind of things? So that continues, that work continues. And we'll continue to share information, any new news that we get that is, would be of interest to the public. But that's just something I want to just make sure and reiterate that, that people understand that we are watching that. We do discuss this and we are setting up, I guess, platforms for testing as well, for those variants. So with that said, I just want to remind the public that the COVID-19 vaccines are certainly, they continue to be a huge public health tool to help us stop the pandemic. It's, without the vaccines, we would take a huge step backwards. And so it's important that we use the tools that we have given to us as humans in terms of fighting this virus. And public health officials across the United States continue to highly recommend that individuals get vaccinated with the COVID-19 vaccine. It doesn't matter which one. What matters is that you do get vaccinated because it can help prevent, it can help reduce the severity in the event that you do get the virus. So it's effective on a number of levels. And so we also continue to make sure that people understand the COVID vaccine is not the only answer at this point in time. We still need your assistance in watching our distance from one another, wearing a mask. You will still see individuals, you know, wearing masks around, and there's a reason for that. We still need to continue doing that, washing our hands, avoiding large groups. We still need the public to really work towards, you know, avoiding large groups to the extent possible and making sure that you're limit, continue to limit your exposure. Right now is such a critical time in this pandemic for all of us to continue to remain vigilant, that we continue to do the things necessary to make sure that we do not start another wave of COVID-19. And the way that we do that, the way that we prevent a third wave is by getting vaccinated, by wearing our mask, washing our hands, washing our hands, watching our distance, avoiding large groups. And again, I've commented before and will continue to comment. Just because everybody's doing something doesn't make it right to do. And I have seen in some of our retail stores here on the nation, around the boundaries of the Navajo Nation, Gallup and other locations. We do have individuals who are not respecting that distance that we so much talk about. And it's important, please, please take care of your family and yourself and watch your distance from others. Keep that six-foot difference, distance so that we can stop the transmission of this virus. Anytime that you're in a retail store, getting essentials such as food and so forth. So beautiful weather coming. I'm really excited because we're entering into that spring time of the year and looking forward to positive things happening. And I want to thank everyone for your continued work with the, you know, us as healthcare professionals, public health professionals. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn the time over to Dr. Va, who is also an outstanding public health official, a medical doctor in the Chinley Service Unit with the IHS. And she's going to be going over some, what we call gating criteria and gating measures. And she'll talk, she'll speak with that just a little bit more than that. But it's important factual information that we're following in order to determine our next steps in this pandemic. So Dr. Va, you have the mic when you're ready. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. And thank you so much, Captain Johnson. And again, I'm always, I feel very privileged to be able to speak to everybody here on this platform. So I greatly appreciate the efforts here on the team here that's speaking on the town hall, as well as to everybody that listens in week after week. So thank you very much. Let me go ahead and share my screen. So you can see. Okay. And so as Captain Johnson mentioned, I will go over our gating indicators for this week. And really what we do is we are EpiTeam, our unified EpiTeam reviews over the data week after week so that we can give everyone here a look at what is happening right now. And so this, this information captures all the information that we reviewed over the last week, calendar week. And so what that means is that it captures everything up until February 25. And just to review why this is important that we do this, is that we look at the cases and we look at trends in cases, testing. We look at our capacity to respond, whether that's clinically in our hospitals or whether it's clinically in the community with our public health capacity. And then I'm hoping to do, to translate all of this in terms of what does that mean for community spread of COVID-19? What does that mean for your risk of COVID-19? And then as Captain Johnson and President Nez and Vice President Lizer mentioned, what can you do at this time, given some new information, right? With vaccine data as well as understanding what this means with the variants of COVID-19 virus or those new strains of COVID-19 virus that are changing as a result of our pandemic a year in. And so the first one that we are looking at is just looking at the second surge. Remember, Navajo Nation, our pandemic started, our outbreak started a year ago. And that was our first wave. Our first wave was in early March. And it took a while to really bring that down, mid-May and June. And then we reached our lowest level in September, right before Labor Day, and then we surged again. And so, so I know we've been here before. And so this just gives you an idea of where we currently are with the second surge. Just focusing on that second wave is that we are, we continue on our downward trend, meaning the cases are getting less and less every day. And you see that here is that we went up right after Labor Day. We had a few bumps because of the holidays, likely because of gatherings. But since then, we have continuously and significantly have gone down. Now, in regards to infection rate, what else does that mean? Right now, we do track this and we do model this and we look at what we call the infection rate. And the infection rate is the ability of one person with COVID-19 to effectively transmit COVID-19 to others if they were to go out in the community or gather in a group. And what we do know is that early in our outbreak, whether you're talking about the first surge or the second surge, our infection rate was close to two, if not higher. And what that meant was one person transmits disease to two other people very effectively. And that tells you how quickly this can grow. And so when we look at this week to week, we want this to be less than one because we want to make sure, actually, we want this to be as close to zero as possible if we do all those things that we hope to do, such as, you know, quarantine, isolating effectively, washing your hands, wearing a mask, right? We want one person to transmit COVID-19 to zero people. That's the idea. But if it's less than one, then we know that we anticipate to see fewer cases. This, again, has been less than one. And so we're expecting to see fewer cases in the upcoming weeks. And this is also represented here on this map, where you sort of see that trend translate to our risk and degree of community spread across Navajo Nation. So before, when we were at our peak in our second surge, this was red and purple. And what you're seeing now is you're seeing more orange across the four states. You're also seeing more orange, yellow, and green across the eight federal service units and I638 tribal health organizations combined. And so we know that this is, the trends are getting better. Over the last seven days, ending last Thursday, we had 160 new cases documented. That is much less than before. And if you drill this down and look at the average daily cases for every 100,000 populations, over every 100,000 people, then for the 14 days, if you look over 14 days, it was 18. If you look over the last seven days, it was 14. Our goal here before was, we had this greater than 25 average daily cases. So every day, on average, we had about 25 cases, right, for our population. But we wanted that less than 25 to really reduce risk and hopefully drive it even less than that. And so what we do know based on these numbers is that our risk is indeed going down and less than 25 average daily cases for our population. And if we drill that down even more specifically, what you're looking at here is you're looking at the more detailed information for each of those eight areas, including New Mexico satellite areas. And you see, with the exception of Fort Defiance, you see that all of these areas have less than 25 average daily cases for 100,000 people. You also see the trends all going down, for the most part, with the exception of Fort Defiance. And the test positivity, we track closely as well because testing still plays an important role. And we see that test positivity has also gone down. Now, for all of Navajo Nation combined, our test positivity is 9%. Our goal to really, as we shift from risk categories, was to get this less than 10%. And it's currently at 9% and is indeed less than 10%. So less than one out of every 10 tests come back positive. We are, we do recognize that our tests, the amount of tests that we do week to week have gone down. And our testing team is looking at this as well. And so we do monitor this very closely, as I mentioned earlier. And the reason for that is that we want to make sure that anybody who needs a test is being tested. Anybody who has a high exposed Anybody who has a high exposure or has been identified as a close contact really still needs to be tested. So we want to make sure that we provide this in a way that's accessible and available to those that need it, as well as being able to test, test, what we call test smartly. And so we do monitor this very closely. Hospitalizations, if you look at these graphs, in particular ICU beds used, we are seeing across Navajo Nation that ICU beds used, whether it's Navajo Nation total, whether it's 630 tribal health organization facilities only, or IHS facilities only. All of those staffed ICU beds used are less than 80% and had gone down. And then went, are currently less than 80% and maintain less than 80%. Across the four states, and you see all these wiggly lines, these different colors, they just represent the different four states like Arizona, Colorado, Utah, and Mexico. And what we are looking for is that we want all those lines to eventually get below this dash red line at 80%. If it does that, then we know that the beds are not being used and are not full and in what we call crisis care. And those trends have been positive as well and have gone down below 80% with the exception of Arizona. But Arizona is going down. For contact tracing, contact tracing still remains a very critical role as we try to drive our cases down. And we currently have 327 contact tracers for all of Navajo Nation. And that means that we have nine contact tracers for every daily new case. And so we have sufficient staff to do effective contact tracing to follow and identify cases. And then really to also follow and identify those that have been exposed and are now contacts. Now, this data is slightly different than what Captain Johnson mentioned. And the reason for this is that this captures everything at the end of last week in regards to doses of COVID vaccines distributed and administered and the second doses that people, or number of people that receive second doses. And so Captain Johnson mentioned what the most recent current data is as of today. And this is the end of that week, last week. And so what we do know at the end of last week, that we administered 85% of all the doses distributed to area office in Navajo Nation. And so we continue to work, our mass vaccination team continues to work very hard across the different sites here in Navajo Nation to make sure all the doses that we receive, we use, and we use on community members. So what does that mean? And I'll explain this a little bit further. Right now, we were in that red, in terms of risk category, we were in that red phase. And that red phase really meant that there was extensive community spread. And the risk of COVID-19 was high for anybody, for myself, for you, for your family, everyone who lives in the community. We have met all the indicators to start to transition that risk to orange. So what does orange mean? Orange means that it's no longer extensive, but it's still substantial. And so community spread is still very much out there and very substantial. So your COVID risk is still high. It's just the degree of community spread has gone down a little bit more, and we're heading in that right direction. And so at this time, for our public health response, we are assessing how to, you know, will this trend continue? And if so, if this, if this trends continue, then what that might mean to everybody in the community, as well as other partners such as schools and businesses. And so we are in an assessment period at this time. Now, outside Navajo Nation, I will focus a little bit on this curve. So as you see, orange represents the Navajo Nation, right? In our entire pandemic, over a year. And then blue is the United States. And so just to recap, we had our first surge in May, you know, March, April, May. And then it took a while to come down. And then we reached our lowest point right before Labor Day, right? And then we went right into another surge and had our second surge, our second wave. And you see the US is doing something similar, right? They had a first, what they call a first wave, a second wave around Memorial's Day. And then right before, after Labor Day, they had their third wave. And so right now for Navajo Nation, we are reaching levels where, not quite yet, but we are reaching levels where we were before, right before Labor Day. And the US has, very similarly, is sort of reaching levels right before they went into their third wave, if not a little bit higher, actually. And so the concern here is that how do you move forward in a safe and cautious way so that you continue to see these curves for both the US and Navajo Nation drive down? What you don't want is that we don't want to have this curve sort of just flatten out now. Right? And so that's what we're hoping to prevent. We don't want to flat, we don't want to flatten out right now. We want to drive this even lower. And so that's why the discussion on all these preventive measures and how to move cautiously and slowly so that we don't, one, we don't prevent a, for us will be a third surge. Or we do prevent a third surge and that we don't plateau right now. We need to drive cases much, much lower for multiple reasons. We, in regards to, we haven't vaccinated enough people. And as you know, there's those other variants that are constantly being identified across the US as well as across our region. And so more good news for the Navajo Nation is that this gets looked at week after week. And what you see here is that the four states, Utah, Arizona, Colorado, and New Mexico are in red, and Navajo Nation is in orange. And since we are going into a year, remember, there was a few times during our pandemic where Navajo Nation had the highest number of COVID cases per capita for our population, when you compared it across the US. We are currently ranked 38th, and we are ranked lower than the four surrounding states. And so it tells us that our fall in cases are faster than, say, New Mexico, Colorado, Arizona, or Utah. And so this is good. I'm hoping, and our team hopes that we can rank last. This further highlights where, where the US is. And it's, we're in this very, very transition period that everything we do is really important, right? And so like, you see, a lot of the states are now in yellow and orange. And you see our four region of the four states are in orange as well. And so we want to proceed very, very cautiously at this time. Here, this is again, a table, so it drills down a little bit more and compares ourselves to the four states. And what we do know is that you see, you see Arizona going down. You see Colorado is doing something where it's going up slightly there. New Mexico is going down, Utah, the line, the curve is going down. Navajo Nation continues to go down. So those are all good trends, but we want to be cautious, right? We don't want to trigger another surge. And then you see here, the infection rate is all less than one across the four states as well here in Navajo Nation, but we'll watch that very closely. Our test positivities are all less than 10. And then we are monitoring our vaccine efforts because we understand that's one of the tools that we have available to us to try to, to try to really respond to this, to COVID-19. And so for Navajo Nation, if, based on our data, available data, is that we, and this is last week, it's likely higher now. Is that 39% of the Navajo population that resides within Navajo Nation or in border towns have received at least one dose of either Moderna or Pfizer. And so we want to drive that number much higher. We are also monitoring closely the variants. And so for CDC, they're tracking three variants. The B.1.1.7 variant of COVID-19, which was identified in England, and the B.1.3.5.1 identified in South Africa, as well as the P.1 variant identified in Brazil. And so here in the four-corner region, in the, in Colorado, Utah, New Mexico, and Arizona, right now, the variant that's being tracked by CDC, that's been identified, has only been the B.1.1.7 variant. Now, Vice President Lizer mentioned that there is the California variant that was identified as well. And so in New Mexico region, I'm sorry, Utah area. And so for Arizona, we do track that. Arizona does indeed track that. And so the common variant here in Arizona is actually that California variant first, followed by the B.1.1.7 variant, which was identified in England. And then I'll speak a little bit more to what that all means, right? And so right now, as you see this, our public health response has multiple arms that we try to approach, we try to approach this in the, in a multi-faceted way. One of them does include genomic surveillance. And so I do understand the Navajo Department of Health, as well as the Navajo EpiCenter, is really working hard to try to get this concept of viral genomic surveillance up and going so that we can look at which variants exist on Navajo Nation. The other part of this as well, you know, COVID-19, our vaccination program. And so, and so just in summary, what all this might mean is, is that we, as we transition to these lower risk categories, what we do know is that even if we transition and agree that we are, we are in this orange phase, if trends continue, is that even in the orange phase, risk is still substantial. So COVID risk is still high for everybody in the community. What we also know is that, as Captain Johnson mentioned, is that vaccines right now are not the only answer because there's still a lot of unknowns. And so what that means is that, yes, we are doing a good job in our efforts. And I applaud our vaccine team and our vaccine program. But really to reach the numbers that we need to create that level of protection in the community, we're not there. And we have to vaccinate a lot of the people still. And so, and then there's the new strains. We actually, data is still evolving, the science is still being collected. But we really don't know what that means in terms of our ability to, you know, what that might, how that might impact our vaccine efforts and how that might impact this goal to create this level of community protection through vaccines. We don't know just yet. And you're, you know, again, the data on that is still coming out. And so as a result, what does that mean to you? This is the reason why everyone, you know, we, what it means is that as a public health response, as the community members, we are advising everyone to be still very vigilant and very cautious, right? And we want to move very cautiously as we're coming down this surge, moving into these different risk categories. Because again, we've been here before and there still remains a lot of stuff that we don't know. And so we are advising everyone to still wear a mask, double mask, you know, avoid gatherings, socially, physically distance, right? And keep in mind, anything that's indoors is riskier than outdoors. Good thing with the weather that's improving, we can transition, you know, and do things more outdoors. And so those are all things that you still have to do, and we all still have to do, and I have to do, even if you're vaccinated, until the evidence is there to support, to support changes in these behaviors. And so I just wanted to reiterate that. Overall, I thank everybody for listening in, and I thank our team for coming up with the data and reviewing it and putting it in a way that translates to what, to action and what we can do to continue to protect ourselves, our loved ones, and our community. I will hand this over to Dr. Jim. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for joining this afternoon. It's almost afternoon. I am Dr. Jill Dem and the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health. I wanted to just thank all the listeners and also the update from Dr. Va and the teamwork that they do every single day under the Health Plan Operations Center. There is always, every day, there is effort around collecting data from the hospitals, from the state health departments, and also local health departments to get our numbers updated so we know where we're at in the level of disease spread or risk out there in the community. So I, that is a lot of work, and that happens every single day as you guys receive reports seven days a week. And I just wanted to share that information and also with our partners, with health facilities and IHS and the teams that we have in here on the Navajo Nation have been working on these efforts for over a year. And it's definitely a lot of work besides our regular duties. And this pandemic has really showed us how to work together to try to address the Navajo Nation's COVID-19 response and also the impact that we experience every single day. So I know that we'll continually work on addressing the preventive measures. We don't know how long this pandemic's gonna be, but the best preventive toolkit, tool that we have is to continue to wash our hands, wipe down high-touch surface areas, and then also wear a mask, social distance as well. As people are getting more vaccinated, we know that there could be new recommendations, but we're not there yet. And we just want to continue to encourage. Everyone will, will need to maintain those preventive measures. I know that Dr. Va did share that we are in the orange phase. But as I indicated before, what I'm gonna mention in the orange phase is basically that, that we have been in red for a very long time, as Dr. Va said. And that we have, in some days, reached over 300 new cases. And it was a lot of anxiety, and we were nervous, and there was fear in the pandemic because, and the outcome of this disease is death in some cases for those that are not able to withstand the virus. And that's why it was very important for everyone to ensure that we follow the shelter in place to save lives and reduce hospitalizations was the goal of this pandemic. And I'm just glad that everyone has participated in this as a good citizen and, and protecting ourselves and our families as well. And so as we move towards, as the downward trajectory, as Dr. Va said, we are cautiously still monitoring all the numbers. It's still very important, as we have been talking about, and also nationally about the new variants. They all behave differently, and we have not got a good handle on this. So we will be looking at these on a weekly basis to determine what is happening. And that's why we conduct surveillance. And the numbers definitely show that we're moving in the right direction. But what we want to make sure is that we have safety plans and operations that are in place for businesses and others, and such as schools, to ultimately take tiny steps in making services available to the public, including some conversations that we've been having with the Economic Recovery Group that Vice President is leading as well, and also the Community Mitigation Group, where we're addressing reopening plans for the last couple of weeks. Well, actually, it's been, it's been talked about for a number of months in trying to figure out how do we ensure that we're adequately addressing new guidelines as they are becoming available. So there, we want to give enough time for people to be prepared. So what we're gonna be making changes in the future as we cautiously reopen to transition into orange. Although the gating measures state that we are in orange status now, we will wait a couple of weeks until the new public health order expires to wait another week to look at ways to open at 25%, have businesses reorient, reorientate themselves and be ready to have PPE for customers, employees, themselves, have screening checks, make sure there's social distancing in place. And then other services that we haven't provided, we are in the discussion of looking at churches as well, limiting individuals for that. And those details will come out in a new public health order with a safety guidance as well. And also providing opportunities for selected students to attend school in person as well. And so that will be addressed in another public health order with specific guidelines. And then I know casino is, has been on our list. We also have tourism. Tourism is not on the table for any considerations until we have a combined efforts of leadership. Tourism is not on the table for any considerations until we have a combined efforts of leadership. But as far as the casino, we will be looking at a tiny, limited pilot test that we can look at. And those details are not out yet, and those are still in discussion. I think this will allow us time for the businesses and also different entities that haven't been open for a while to find ways to make sure that they address all the public health order recommendations, so that we can safely operate. To the extent that it could change, we will be monitoring our, some recommendation, our gating measures will change in the future to look at seven-day trending versus 14-day trending. So those are some assurances that we'll have to quickly move back into the red phase of we need to. And so as the states around us are adjusting and reopening, the environment is quite different. I think we're going to have to remind ourselves that in this pandemic, we, our relatives and family members travel across the three states or four states around us. And they have all different sorts of reopening guidelines. But on Navajo, we are taking this very seriously to take extra precautions instead of just opening up, opening up quickly. So I just want to reiterate that it's very important is that we are open to following the gating measures, but we also need to ensure that the proper safety protocols are in place so that people can have access and there isn't any neglect around individual safety as well. So I just wanted to share some of that information today with everyone regarding what we're deciding as, from the Health Command Operations Center, along with our safety team. And so as you leave the Navajo Nation, you will see less restrictions. But I think all of us have done a good job. Sometimes when you go to town, you see our Navajo relatives wearing masks compared to other racial or ethnicities. I'm, I'm really proud of that, and I think our leadership is, and all the health professionals out there, that when we see our own people wearing a mask out there in public and taking the precautions that they need to, that's a lot that we, a lot to be proud of. So I'll see you here in Kedimido for everyone that takes that extra precaution. And it really means a lot here, because on Navajo, like, we want to ensure that we are safeguarding our elders. We have lost a lot of our relatives and family members. And it's a healing process. And as we do this, I know that we want some sort of normalcy, but we're not there yet. And so you will hear on social media, we get a lot of information from social media as well. And they might say we're lifting restrictions and, but you will see from the CDC and the new administration will provide new guidance. And they are cautious, and we have heard from Dr. Will Walensky as well, indicating that we need to be careful and, and also take, continue to take the precautions that we need to. So I just wanted to just encourage that we are all doing a good job and to continue to mask up and also even around family members, even though we're vaccinated. It's okay. I think we've gotten used to wearing a mask and all of that. But gatherings are still limited, but we can start moving into providing some recommendations around that. But we would have to relook at safety precautions as much as we can. So I just want to share that with everybody around the new public health order. Some that we will be addressing and have been discussing, but those will be seen in a new public health order. So I just want to stop there. I don't know, President and Vice President has any closing comments? I did share some anticipations of public health orders. So I just want to thank the listeners to this afternoon. So if you had.